The scripture that we're going to be covering is out of the book of Joshua, chapter 4, and verses 1 through 24. And you can read it on your own time, we won't go back through all that. But what's going on is when they're getting ready to cross the Jordan River at this point in Joshua, where he describes it. And of course, we know they crossed on dry land. And if you study the history and the time of year that this happened, it would have been in their flood season. So it would have been one of the worst times to cross the Jordan River. But just like God did at the Red Sea, he did something very, very similar here. He pushed back the water, dry land, because again, we're talking lots and lots of people with lots and lots of stuff. And you can imagine, we talked about you go out when the water recedes on the river, you go out there and you walk back and forth on that sandbar, it's going to start pumping, and then you're eventually going to crack through it, and water's going to come up. Well, they crossed on dry land. And God had them set stones in the middle of the river on dry land, had them set stones where they camped out at. And it's all about, you know, having things in our life that we can look back on and tell our kids about it, or tell our family about it. And that's what it was about the stones. And of course, the heading there is, "Take a step, grab a stone." And he had them, he chose a certain number from the tribes, well, from the tribes. And then the Lord told them, "Put the rocks in the middle of the river." Of course, it was dry land when they stacked them. And what that was for, so that when they went into the drought season, and we'll touch on it again, but just give you an overview, people would see those stones stacked. And later on, maybe generations later, so somebody would say, "What's those from?" And then that would give you an opportunity. Well, let me tell you about the history of Christianity, about the history of how your descendants got to where we are today. So it's something, you know, and communion, that made me think about communion. And you know, we're very intentional, or at least I try to teach that in a way that, you know, the Bible tells us, if you're not safe, communion is not for you. And a lot of people will give their kids, you know, the bread and the juice, just to get them to be quiet. Well, you shouldn't. And the reason you shouldn't is that gives you an opportunity after the fact to answer questions about what that means. Well, Daddy, why couldn't I? Mama, why couldn't I? And then you can explain to them what they stand for, what they relate to, same kind of scenario that's going on here. So that's what Joshua, chapter 4, verse, it's the whole chapter, 1 through 24. I encourage you to go back and read that. And a lot of this will probably make more sense, but just a few notes there. So it's fun to get to see God show up in your life. And a lot of times, though, we overlook it. Many times, God will do something in our life, and it may be a really big deal, and we just overlook the fact that God has done something miraculous in our life. But it is, in those times, often, when He makes Himself real, that our faith grows, and we discover different things. And that gives, of course, that satisfying and rest and feeling with God. And it gives an example here, like a Super Bowl-winning team who becomes too content with their victory reveling in the past, doesn't do, it won't do a whole lot for your future. You know, LSU, probably a good example of that. Go back a couple of years ago, they had one of the greatest teams in college history. They were terrible the next year, and they're looking so fair so far this year, but you know, that ain't going to get you, but so far. And if you don't use that event, or something that God does in your life, you know, and recognize what God has done, and use that going forward, and you know, you can't live on that, but we need to use that for something even greater. And one of the questions here says, "How can you guard yourself from falling into the similar slump of looking backwards?" But referring to spiritual victory and success. You know, it is classic. You know, you see something tragic happen in a family, and then they survive. And then they start making all kinds of promises and vows to God, but based on a lot of ifs through that. You know, "If you'll get me out of the hospital, if you'll heal my child, if you'll heal my marriage, if you'll help me get this job, if I can just get this raise," and then we go on about our married way. And we don't look back and realize, so we could get into a spiritual slump if we're not careful. So it asks, you know, "How can you guard yourself?" Stay in obedience, stay prepared, look for what else we can do for the Lord. And everything that happens in your life happens for a reason. Sometimes, you know, it's to get our attention, and sometimes it's to get somebody else's attention. So, you know, keep thinking about, "How can we guard ourselves from falling into a similar thing?" And that's what have been, you know, when the children of Israel here crossed the Jordan River. Man, that was an absolute miracle that they did that. To never speak of that again, or to never tell their children, "You're not going to, you can't wrap your mind around what God did to get us here." Let me tell you what happened at the Jordan River. Let me tell you what happened at Canaan. Let me tell you what happened at the Red Sea. And to know just how good God is. And that's really, this whole next section we're going to go to, that's what it's about, is us carrying on into that next generation. So the miracle of crossing the Jordan River was absolutely a tremendous miracle on all fronts. But God didn't want the miracle to get lost in, you know, how big of a deal it really was. So having them set up what we often call stones of remembrance. And that's where he told them, "Set some stones here, and set some stones there, and use this as an opportunity to teach the next generations." So they served as a reminder to tell about what God did to provide a way out when there was no way, as He ushered them into the promised land. Brother Dean, a good example. You know, God brought him back from cancer. Just, "We didn't think we was going to have you around very long at one point. And now here you are, just stirring up trouble now, getting after you." And, you know, and God, no doubt, performed a miracle in your life. Brother Darrell, kidneys don't work. Now your kidneys work. I mean, that is an absolute miracle. And to not use that to point people to the Lord, and say, "You know, He may not perform a miracle every time, but He did for me." You know, and that's the thing. And the Psalmist tells us that, I think in Psalm chapter 66, says, "Come and hear, all you that listen, let me tell you what He's done for me." I'm paraphrasing, but I think it's Psalm 66, verse 16 or so, right in there. But anyhow, we need to use those kinds of things. And again, take it to the next generation. So why did God call Israel to set up stones? And we've kind of covered it a little bit, but I want to see if y'all got any feedback. Why did God call Israel to set up stones in the middle of the river where no one may see them again? And sometimes, you know, with that drains, lakes, and you know, you hear books, there's books and stories about, you know, and they say, "Oh gosh, there's a house, there's a car," you know, and everybody's forgotten it. And I've seen old, old pictures of Toledo Bend before it was flooded. You know, big, huge decks of logs, and houses, and cities, and you know, you still hear of cars and stuff like that. And at some point, you know, somebody's probably going to see it, and what a great opportunity. And again, it makes me think about communion. And a lot of that, of course, what it is, the whole thing is, "This do in remembrance of Me." That's what communion is all about. The next question, "What does God ask, why does God ask us to continually remember what He has done for us?" Yes, sir. You know, and it keeps our focus, you know. Again, realizing what all God has done for us. Realizing how many things, I mean, it's nothing short of a miracle to breathe your next breath. You know, and y'all have heard me say it, and I didn't come up with it, but every next breath is a second chance. You know, it's another chance to keep our focus on His goodness, on His grace, on His mercy, on His love, and My goodness, I spelled it wrong, but on His patience. Man, He has got lots of patience with us. So to this day, and that's a reference out of verse, verse nine in chapter four there, "To this day" is a phrase that's talked about in there, and it's about to remember that day. So it says, it's repeated in there, when you read that verse, you'll see it. It's repeated in a phrase in Joshua. "While we might not make monuments to God's faithfulness like the Israelites, what are some ways we can keep the work of the Lord in front of our hearts and in front of our minds? What are some ways that we can do that?" Yes, sir. You know, and just like, and we'll look at a scripture here in a minute that kind of elaborates on it too, is, "Begin telling people, 'Let me tell you what God has done for me.'" And they may say, "What about that one verse? Man, I don't really, I can't answer that." But I tell you what God has done for me. Yeah, I don't have 100 verses memorized, but I can tell you what God's done for me. And, you know, so talk of His goodness. And we need to show our faith. You know, we've talked many times, faith without works is what?
Dead.
Dead. Bible tells us that. That is not preacher talk. That is straight out of God's Word. So we need to show our faith, and we need action, not words. We talk a lot of times, you know, we need to put feet to the prayers, not just words, but action. And then sharing our testimony. You need to share your testimony. If somebody gives you that door, walk through it. Walk through it. But, you know, and then, of course, these are not just reminders for others, but it's a reminder for ourself. And we sit down, you know, one of the Psalms, you count your many blessings, name them one by one. We need to, otherwise, we'll forget. We'll forget just how good God has been to us. "The stones placed in the river would be visible during the dry season as a reminder of that one time that thousands crossed on a dry riverbed. The stones in the camp were a reminder to all who had been camped at Gilgal, which is where they camped out at. And God did not want the Israelites to forget what He had done for them. He didn't want them to forget where they came from and how they got there." You know, "I think about where I came from, and what God brought me through, to where God has brought me to." And I remind myself of that often. And I don't, you know, I share it with whoever listens. "The 12 stones that solemnly declared that they were there because of the supernatural hand of God." I mean, just like what we talked about while I go with you two, that's supernatural. "God performed a miracle." Now, why don't He do it every time? I can't answer that. But He has got a plan, He's got a reason. "He knew His people, much like us, were prone for their forgetfulness." It's so easy to do. So top of page 104 there, just going to hit a few high points. Remember who God is. What He has done is critical for each of us if we are to effectively transfer the principles of biblical manhood throughout the generations. You know, one of the things I like to pick on these little kids, but particularly the little boys, I want them to stop, I want them to look at me, and I want them to shake my hand. Not no limp noodle, like squeeze my hand. Now, look at me. And I tell everyone, I said, "That's what men do." Because if we don't, I mean, if they pay attention to society, they're going to forget what men are. I mean, society is trying to sissy down men. And I stop all the time. If they give me the chance, I'm going to have them, I'm going to shake their hand, they're going to stop and look at me. Now, don't squeeze my hand. Now, that's what, I just, they need to know what men are supposed to do. And, you know, now, it's almost an insult, and it's made fun of on shows and stuff, for a man to open a woman's door, for a man to stand on the roadside, walking down the sidewalk. You know, silly things like that. It's, you know, "I'm doing my best to teach my daughter what she should expect in a man, a good man, and teach my son how he should treat, you know, try to get him to, you know, be courteous to his mother, so that he can learn." And, but anyway, we need to pass those things on. So the scripture here, Deuteronomy 4:9 says, "Only give heed to yourself, keep your soul diligently, so that you do not forget the things which your eyes have seen, and they do not depart from your heart all the days of your life, but make them known to your sons and your grandsons." That is what we are to do. And some people may say, "Well, you know, maybe you never had a kid." I don't know, we're going to cover that in just a second, too. It's not just about having a blood son or a blood daughter. You still have people you can pass that on to. So we need to remember, Deuteronomy 6 talks about, you know, the Lord was talking to them here and reminding them, "You know, where you're living, you didn't build. You know, the goods you're getting, you know, you didn't plant. The sisters you're drinking from, you didn't dig." And he goes on, and he says, "Do not forget the Lord who brought you from the land of Egypt and out of the house of slavery." Don't forget. And we need to remind our children, and those, maybe not our children, and those that we have an opportunity to just share it with. Every one of these verses, Deuteronomy 4:9, it says, "Do not forget." Deuteronomy 6:10 through 12, it says, "Do not forget." Deuteronomy 8:11, it says, "Do not forget." And Deuteronomy 8:14, it talks about, you know, "Don't be too proud, or you will forget." And Deuteronomy 8:18 through 20, it says, "But you shall remember," and it said, "if you ever forget." It's same concept, same theme, you see in all of those verses right there. And that's what all those questions talk about in the next one. So towards the bottom of page 105, it says, I wrote, "Beware above it," just for us to be thinking. "God does miraculous work in His people's lives all the time, all the time. But the problems arise when we forget what He has done, and as a result, either start taking credit for ourselves, or ignore His future guidance, or worse, both. We forget where we come from, and we don't even look to Him in moving forward." So definitely some good warnings here, finishing up that lesson. So that brings us to our, we got week seven, and we got one more left. It takes probably three more times of meaning to get through them, but only two sections left. So week seven here is, "Furthering the Future." Furthering the Future, and that is our duty. So page 108, just a few things before we watch the film for this section. Of course, last time, we talked about God sets the stage for our greatest spiritual victories, and how He expects us to pass those blessings on through the process of discipleship, whether that's to another man, whether that's to your children, whatever it might be. And it says, "No matter how quickly you run in a relay, you will lose if you do not pass the baton." You think about that. You may have the fastest joker in the whole relay, and he burns everybody down, and then he can't get the baton passed right. Can't do it. And I watched one of, this was actually back in the Olympics, and they had a mixed men and women, and it was one of them things showing men can't compete against women. And the team, this team was about a quarter of the track ahead of everybody, passed off their baton, and the lady took off. There was four guys behind her. Everyone looked, run her down, and beat her. You know, just, that wasn't right. It wasn't what they should have done. And, you know, we got to keep things the way that they should be. So God expects us, remember where we've come from, and know where we need to go to. Again, "No matter how quickly you run in a relay, you will lose if you do not pass the baton." So if your kids see that the Lord is not a quarter, you're dropping a baton. If your kids do not see, and not just hear, but see, that coming in fellowship on brothers and sisters in Christ, you have dropped a baton. It is what we've done. So while we understand this principle, when it comes to running relay races, we have somehow failed to grasp what's important when it comes to living as kingdom men. I read a, I think I screenshot it, but I can remember a statistic I saw somewhere this week, I believe. Yep, here it is. About people in your home getting saved. Family gets saved if the child gets saved first, 300%. Family gets saved if the wife is saved first, 17%. Family gets saved if the husband is saved first, 93%. 93%. You tell me, it's not, there's not a lot dependent on the men. 93%. That is crazy, if the man gets saved first, and then starts walking in the Lord. It's not guaranteed, we know that, but it is almost there, that the family's going to follow, when they see the dad doing that, and that how real that is. So we desperately need more men to realize this and rise up to fulfill the great purpose of the body of Christ. So with that, Brother Gil, if you want to go ahead and start that video there, we'll watch it.
Is that thing on up there? Is the sound up? That thing on up there?
Yes, sir.
It's working already. Maybe it's playing, but don't you have to turn on something behind that thing up there?
I had it on a minute ago.
This is because we have not covered tomorrow by what we do today, thus jeopardizing tomorrow because we failed so miserably today. It is only as we raise up the next generation of boys to become kingdom men, until we do that, then we will not see the improvement of life for the generations to come. And if that does not happen by us, the failure of the future will be our fault. Four men were in a maternity ward waiting for the news about the birth of their child. The nurse came in and said to the first father, "I've got good news. You've had twins." The father said, "Well, that's exciting, because I worked for the Minnesota Twins." She came back a few minutes later and said to the second father, "Boy, you've got, you've got triplets." His father said, "That's so wonderful. I worked for 3M." She comes back in a few minutes later to the third father and says, "Well, sir, I've told you this, you've got quadruplets." He says, "Well, that's fine, because I worked for four seasons." But then she saw the fourth father, Prem. She said to him, "Why are you so sad?" He said, "Because I worked for Seven Up." Sometimes you feel the future, and tomorrow can make you a little discouraged today. But at the heart of being a kingdom man, is that you're invested in raising up the next generation. In a relay race, speed is important, but passing the baton is critical. Because no matter how fast you are, if you do not accurately pass the baton, if that baton drops, the race is over, because you failed. Many of men are running fast with their careers, are running fast with their economic progress, are running fast with their hobbies, are running fast with their goals, but who are dropping the baton of furthering the future through investing in raising up kingdom men for the next generation. If you are going to be a kingdom man, creating kingdom men, then you have to be generationally minded, and not merely personally fulfilled. Now, nothing wrong with being personally fulfilled. The Proverbs 13:12 says that a good man passes on an inheritance to his children's children. That means you must not only be concerned about you and your generation, but the next generation, your children, and the generation after that, your children's children. So it shouldn't surprise us. Then in the Bible, we read God saying, "I am the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob." You don't see Him saying, "I'm the God of Sarah, Rebecca, and Rachel." Not because the ladies and the mothers weren't critical, but because the men were responsible. You see, at the heart of being a kingdom man, is that you accept responsibility under God for the future. And when a man abandons the future, impacting his children first, and then those under his influence, raising them up to be kingdom men, then the future becomes very weary. That's why fathers are told in Deuteronomy 6:7 to train their children. In Ephesians, chapter 6, verse 4, "Fathers raise your children." I don't know if you knew this or not, but in the Bible, the fathers raised the children, not the mother. Why? Because he was responsible. Now, what was the mother to do? Help. Fill in the gaps when he couldn't be there. He has to work, he has to provide, he can't be there. She's the helpmate, she's not the replacement mate. It was the father who set his children around the table. Psalm 128, verse 3 says, "And turned olive plants into olive trees." Takes 15 years for an olive plant to become a full-grown olive tree, but if you nurture it right, it'll produce olives for generations. In Israel, there are 2,000 new olive trees, still pumping out olives. You know why? Because their roots weren't deep. We have a lot of complaints about the next generation. Well, they're really the product of this generation. Because the fatherless test, even because the father is not there, or he is there, but he's abandoned his wall while being there. Then we put on an unconscionable burden to women, and we have failed the next generation, especially of younger men. It shows up in our prisons, it shows up in our crime, it shows up in our injustice, it shows up in our abandonment, it shows up in our teenage pregnancies, it shows up all over and over again. That we're not furthering the future, we're ruining the future. And until men rise up and accept this responsibility, until we own this task of saying, "No, I'm not just here for me, I'm here for my children and my children's children." But what exactly is the inheritance that you pass on? Most responsible men have a will. If you don't have one, you're not responsible, because you're passing it on. You don't want somebody to pass it on for you, including the government. So you're making your will, and your will is passing on what you consider of value to your children, money, houses, land, other physical attributes that you want to pass on to your children. Let me tell you something, you passed on to your sons, you passed on your name. Because when the girls marry, by and large, they will take on the name of another. But your sons carry your name. And the Bible says that your name matters, it's your reputation. You're to pass on the inheritance of a great man, but you're also to pass on the baton of a great man. In other words, you should be producing kingdom sons. Sons who understand that they're underneath the rule of God in order to cultivate a relationship, to reflect the character, and to represent Him in everything that they do. And that won't happen by osmosis, that won't happen by chance, that won't happen because you knew it happening. Because you understand you have two jobs, not just one. Yes, you go to work to bring home the bacon, but then you come home to your second job. Your second job is to make sure you are the dominant influencer, transferring the faith to the next generation. This is a big deal in the Bible. It's called the blessing. It was what Jacob tricked Esau out of. He tricked him out of the blessing. He cahooted with his mama to get that blessing that was by age due to Esau. Why didn't he want that blessing? Because that assured his future. See, the blessing meant you were future-oriented. It was passing on the covenant. It was passing on the favor of God to the next generation. And Jacob wanted that divine favor. See, we're, we're passing on a lot of things. Some of them are not good. Some of them okay. Most of them are not enough. Because what we're not passing on are kingdom values. Values that they adopt in terms of their identity. Values that they adopt in terms of their respect and respectfulness. Values that ignite their faith for God and their service to God. Values that produce honor and respect for women. Values that produce giving dignity to other men. Values that produce giving dignity to other men. Values for them to understand that they're to raise their sons up like you raised them up to transfer an inheritance of divine favor. For what good if you pass on money without favor? Because the Bible says, "When God gives you stuff, he gives no sorrow with it." There's a lot of sorrow going around with people passing on stuff. Now, you can't change your failures of the past. They're gone. They've been done, and you can't fix that. But you can control your successes of the future. And as I always like to say, God is a fool's eye with a crooked stick. My wife is a great cook, and, uh, she would cook big Sunday meals, huge Sunday meals. Roast potatoes, green beans, just, just awesome Sunday meals. But after we ate these big Sunday meals, she became the Tupperware queen. She would, uh, put the leftovers in the Tupperware, put them in the refrigerator, bring them out on Monday, because she wasn't putting a brand new meal on Sunday. Bring them out on Monday, and then reconfigure them. One day, I saw her take the cast iron dish. Then she diced and chopped the leftovers from Sunday and sprinkled them in the cast iron dish. Then she grated some cheese and sprinkled the grated cheese over the leftovers in the cast iron dish. Then she got some cream of mushroom, poured it over the grated cheese, and it was over the leftovers. It's a cast iron dish. Then she put it in the oven and heated it, brought it back out. Shucks, that was the best stuff I ever had in my life. Actually, what it was, was leftovers in the hands of a master. You see, God can take what you have left, dice it, chop it, pour a little cream of Holy Ghost over it, and still serve you a life worth living. In fact, let me tell you how good God is. He can give you the years, the locusts that taken away, so that you can make up the lost time. You can pick up the baton that you dropped and still come out a winner in the race. Because you just didn't feel sorry for your failures yesterday. When you are losing a race, you can't go back to the starting line. What you can do is pick up the speedway you are and still come out in front. So further the future by raising up the next generation. First, by becoming a kingdom man that raises up kingdom men to change the culture. Because if Christ doesn't come back, then we will own the kind of culture we live in. The good and the bad. Time for kingdom men to rise up.
All right, just a few things I picked up out of there. Of course, just reiterated kind of where we finished up at about passing the baton and talking about dropping the baton of, of investing in kingdom men. We can't drop that baton, and it happens, you know, he talked there. I know, I know a lot of men, and we've probably all been guilty of it at one point or another that we get so focused on work and money that we overlook our family a lot of times. And we've probably all been guilty of that at some point or another. But says the problem, and I love this, y'all may hear this one again. The problem with this generation is the last generation. Think about that, which if not corrected, will also cause failure for the next generation. And, and I mean, who, just, just in the last 20 years, who would have ever, even five years ago, who would have ever imagined that our Congress would vote, and, and the vote be 208 in the House to 211 to allow abortion full term? I mean, who would have ever thought that? And it's because we've gotten complacent, and we've backed out of so many things. And, and, you know, too many people in church think you shouldn't have any involvement in politics. Well, when we do, they take over, and that's what's happened. I mean, who would have ever dreamed that? And, and probably Catholicism is, is stronger when it comes to being anti-abortion than any other denomination. They're the most outspoken. And nearly every one of them that now are pushing for abortion as political leaders are all Catholics. You know, see, they, they walked away from their faith. They claim to be, right. That's a mouthful. But if we don't pass the baton and, and pass it correctly, not just throw it over there and say, "Son, get to it when you get a chance," or "I'll get to it when I get a chance." So, and, and it talked about a will, you know, everybody, you know, they say we're supposed to have a will prepared. And your will, you know, should be to pass on what's truly of value. Truly of value. You know, a lot of kids I know that, that ended up with a bunch of money, all they ended up with was a bunch of problems. That's, that's where they ended up. You know, I had a good friend of mine. His daddy got killed. Most of y'all know him, right up the road. And, uh, where did he get killed up the road? Was from right up the road, got killed down south. Kids, his son got a pile of money at 18, got another pile of money at 21, and blew every bit of it. He had, he had no guidance. And, uh, it says, "You should be producing kingdom sons. Transfer the faith." It talked about in video, and, and I love that, leftovers in the hands of a master. That, uh, that's for sure. So just, just think about it, you know, what are you passing on? What are you passing on? So that brings us to page 110, and Proverbs 13:22. He mentioned that one, uh, no, he mentioned 10:22, sorry. Proverbs 13:22, "A good man, that's a reference to a godly man, leads an inheritance to his children's children, and the wealth of the sinner is stored up for the righteous." So it ends up going to somebody else. Kingdom men pass on a spiritual inheritance to those who come behind them. If, if my kids don't know, remember anything else about me. I want them to remember I love Christ. I want them to remember. I want them to see that, and, and that there'd be no doubt in their minds when I pass, Daddy loved Jesus. I want that more than anything. Though anyone who is within your sphere, so even if, you know, say you don't have a kid, or your kids are gone, or whatever, anyone who is within your sphere of influence ought to have a greater awareness of God and His kingdom values because of their relationship with you. So think about that. Anybody that has a relationship with you, after you've been around them for a while, do they have a better knowledge of, and awareness of God and His kingdom? Think about that. That's, that's a lot to think about. Transferring kingdom values to future generations. Transferring, that is, again, we should be influencing for Christ. To pass on, uh, kingdom values, we have to be generationally minded. He mentioned that in the video, and not, not merely personally fulfilled. We've got to think about that next generation and, and how we can impact that for God's good. So, a question, I want to hear feedback, if y'all got some. Describe a time when you witnessed the successful transfer of kingdom values, whether to you, from someone else, or from you to someone else. Any, any examples somebody wants to share?
I'm the only one I could think of. My daddy wasn't a leader. But my mom grabbed us up Sunday morning.
Yep. And many times, that's the case. Mom still stood up, said, "I'm taking them babies to church," and thankful for that.
When I got my kids, that's what I did.
Yeah.
Made sure they went to church, and I went with them.
Yes, sir. Anybody else?
Daddy always told me, "Look, good helps in my daughter."
Yeah. But we're sure, we've, we've all got to step up and stand up. And I, just a couple of men that stood out in my mind. Of course, Brother Webb, watch y'all, heard me talk about him quite a bit. He's, he's definitely one of my mentors of a godly man, a godly husband. And still, we talk at least every couple of weeks, and, and he always has some godly wisdom to pass on to me. Always does. And then Brother Tommy Brill, when I was really feeling, starting to recognize that God was calling me into the ministry, even though I'd been working in the ministry, I, I still kind of just, I just wouldn't, wouldn't wrap my mind around it. And I sat down and talked with him, and he said, "Son, first thing you need to do," he said, "If you think you're being called into the ministry," he said, "First thing you need to do is everything else. Anything else that you can do besides that." And I said, "What do you mean?" He said, "Because when nothing else will bring you what that brings you, then you know. Then you know." And, and that was his advice. He said, you know, he said it sarcastically in one way, and, but, but then he, then he brought it home and said, "Now, this is really what I mean. When nothing else will bring you that, that spiritual..." I don't know what, what you want to call it, but, but, and, and I finally realized what he was saying. And, uh, I tried to avoid it long as I could. Just couldn't anymore. So what happens if we don't make transferred kingdom values a priority? That next generation is lost. And, and in most cases, uh, we are a product of our raising. And, and not always, because some people are raised in a horrible environment. And, but, in, in nearly every case, somebody mentored them. It may not have been in their home, but somebody got a hold of them and mentored them and got them in the right direction. And, you know, you, you could have way more influence than any of us ever realized on, on being an influence on somebody. You know, I had a young man that had struggles at, at home, and, uh, you know, he, he reached out to me and, and asked me to just start helping pray with him, helping with some stuff, and, and then other people that, you know, you have impacts on, and you, you don't think you have any impact at all, and then you bump into somebody in their family, and, and they might say, "Man, you just don't know whoa, so and so just, just thinks the world of you." And you had no idea, but, but you were doing your best to be godly and have godly influence on them, and sometimes you don't even realize just how big of an impact you had. Of course, fatherless, and it's kind of what you're talking about, Paul. And, and really, that's in any fatherless home, there's problems. Uh, it's, it's, it's reached in epidemic, epidemic proportions that, that the fathers aren't in the home. And too many fathers allow teaching and discipleship to fall on somebody else. You know, we wonder why a lot of our kids, just say this, this generation now that's kind of coming up, the, the 30s, not all of them, but a lot of them, man, they, they just, what are they thinking? You know, all these crazy things like AOC out there. What in the world? Well, go back to who she was taught by. It, it's a generational thing. Too many just, just put it off on somebody else. Well, you want to know what's wrong with them because we letting the schools teach them everything. We're not giving them the basis of the knowledge that they need. We're letting the schools teach them, and then we're letting the colleges teach them. And most colleges now are liberal. Most. Even a lot of the Christians, they've gotten influenced by the liberals, and, and now they're taking it away from Christianity, and, and it's becoming a worldly thing. Deuteronomy 6:7, here's what the Bible says. "You shall teach them diligently to your sons," talking about the Lord, the commandments, and, and what the God, what, what the Lord would have us to do. "You shall teach them diligently to your sons. Shall talk of them when you sit in your house." How much time do we spend with our family, you know? Uh, "when you walk by the way, when you lie down, and when you rise up." We need to be spending a lot of time with those, again, maybe not your kids. Maybe they're off on their own, but you've got somebody in your sphere of influence that you can have an impact, and you can teach them diligently like the scripture tells us. To whom is this verse directed? That verse is directed to dads. That is who that verse right there is directed to. Now, it's bigger than that, but specifically it is. So, you know, we, we talked about here lately of how, how to study the Bible, you know? What did it mean? What was going on right then? How is that applicable to today, and how is that applicable to, to me? So if, if dads are absent in the home, this can hardly happen. So, you know, that, that's how it's applicable today. And it was just as important it was then. And personally, what does it mean? I need to be teaching my children about the Lord. So how might this verse apply to those of us without children? We've kind of covered that. How might, uh, a man with no physical descendants impact the next generation? You could be a mentor. You could be a mentor. You know, you see, we, it, it breaks my heart when I see somebody come in, sit by theirself, and stay by theirself. We got to be a church, somebody get up and go sit by them. You know, I, I seen a young man sitting in here last Sunday, by himself, full service. We got, somebody needs to get up and go sit by him, or go get him and say, "Man, come over and sit with us." We need to be an impact. We need to be an impact, and, and we've got to be intentional about that. So we often hear a lot of complaints about, again, the next generation, but, you know, really, whose fault is that? Uh, small steps of discipleship lead to larger steps of discipleship, whether it's with your own children, again, or those that you can have an influence on. And it has a prayer written here to bottom, again, really, really good one. Dr. Tommy Evans, uh, is a, he's, he's deep. He's got, and of course, he's got a bunch of kids, grandkids. He's had a lot of training too. Says, "Father, in a world full of selfishness, selfishness, you ask us to think of others by investing in them through an intentional pursuit of spiritual training. Enable us to identify those within our spheres of influence who we can impact for the kingdom and for the greater good of all involved. Open doors for us to have significant influence on those we know and love." That, that, that's a lot to think about, for sure. And then it gives us kind of a, a guide leading into, so you'll, you'll study the next, I'm going to go through this next little section, but it jumps you into what we call, uh, Bible Study 1 and 2 for, for you to do at home. It says, "Hit the streets. Family faith and favor are three things." Page 112, 113. So God has given us three distinct things to pass down as kingdom men to the next generation. And, and passing these down won't happen just because you want it to. We, we got to be intentional. We got to be intentional. The first thing, family. Embrace family on every level, every level. My, my mom's moving back. I, I am so excited, and, and, and I think Brother, I think it was you that said, and answered prayer. You know, some man, I've been, mom been gone almost seven years, six and a half years, and, and I've been begging to come back at least six of them. Uh, it kind of took me a while for it to set in, and then I realized, you know, I want, I want mom to come back, and so we could be there. So family, we need to be like a city on a hill displaying the light that comes from a fully functioning family. I mean, families have, that's, that's not a big deal anymore. You know, the, the devil is after the family. He's gotten after the dad, for the most part, he's got the dads. Now he's going after the moms. And, 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 but ultimately, his goal is to destroy the family unit. So now we got people that, you know, man think they're women, women think they're men, women marrying, men marrying, and next thing, you know? Anyway, it's just going to get more grotesque the more that we allow these things to happen. Family is so dysfunctional now, and, and they've brought it in the TV shows, movies, and cartoons, and everything else. And it's because we've sat back. We've sat back and not said anything. So, you know, you think about, you know, whether a father, a son, a brother, a cousin, an uncle, or a grandson, you have an opportunity to be an influence. So number one, it's got to be putting major importance on family. The second thing you need to think about is faith. Kingdom men are men of faith. Back that statistic we read a while ago. Exponentially, when the dad gets saved, does the home get impacted? Exponentially, that happens. So to, to be a man of faith means that you will allow your decisions to come underneath the rule of God in every area of your life. Faith involves placing God's will for your life above your own will and desire. Putting God's above your own. So when or if you do that, you will not only demonstrate what a kingdom man of faith looks like, but you will be investing in the faith of those who look to you for guidance. You can be a tremendous influence. And, uh, there, there's a country song. I mean, it's been, I don't know, probably 15 years ago, it come out. And this, uh, the song is all about a dad and his little boy. And, and, you know, his little boy did something, and, and he says, "Where'd you learn that from?" "You, Dad," and it was something he did bad. And the very end of the song, he walks into the little boy's room, and he's on his knees praying. And, and he says, "Where, where'd you learn that from you, Dad?" And it, and it was kind of a, a song of, of the, the good and the bad, and the influence that he had on his little boy. And, and it was a pretty, pretty neat little song. I hadn't heard it in a long time, but just, just thought about it reading that. The third thing is favor. Favor. Kingdom men recognize the difference between personal gain and God's blessings. You know, again, give, give, giving a kid a bunch of money, that, that's only going to last a little while. But, but when we, when we give them, and, and we've raised them, we've given them favor. We've shown them favor in, in doing the right thing, in, in, in acting the right way. Uh, Proverbs 20:10, 22, which, which Dr. Tony mentioned there a minute ago. "It is the blessing of the Lord that makes rich, and he adds no sorrow to it." See, and, and I'm talking about, God isn't going to give you anything that's going to take you away from Him. But a lot of people, man, they strive after something. They, they just pray for God to give them this job, and they get this job, and they go. They go to church. That, that, God did not give you that to do that. God will never, ever, it, it is the blessings of the Lord that, that makes rich, and, and he adds no sorrow to it. God isn't going to bring you anything. He's going to bring you something that's going to bring you closer to Him. So God, is God in your gain? Think about that. Is God in your gain? But do you even know? Think about that. When you learn to rest in God's favor, you will also be positioned to teach others how to do the same. So resting in God's favor doesn't have anything to do about being wealthy. It doesn't have anything to do about being powerful. It has all to do with just having peace in the Lord. You know, and again, I know Miss Imogen for example quite a few times, but when she's laying on death's bed, she's still loving the Lord and just as precious as can be, is because she knew she had God's favor. And she was wanting to pass that on to the next generation. And, you know, you see that same sweetness in Miss Evelyn, Miss Carrie. And, you know, you see that that's been passed down into generations. We need to do that as men. A kingdom man always majors on the majors. Family, faith, and favor. A kingdom man always majors on the majors. You will impact future generations for Christ. And like you said about testimony, you're sharing testimony with people every day. It may not be a good one, but it could be, and it needs to be for God. So two questions here to think about, and we'll wrap up for tonight. How are you thankful for the family faith and favor God has given you? And how are you passing them down to the next generation? How are you passing them down? You know, Abel is with Paul all the time. And what an opportunity you have to pass it on down to that next generation. You know, I hope I get my grandkids around to have that opportunity to pass it down to them. So we're going to stop right there, we'll close in prayer, and then you guys, if you would, so not this Thursday, but the next Thursday, we'll meet, and that will be one fourteen through one twenty-one, we'll finish up this section. If y'all would stand.
Jason, I got one thing.
Yes, sir.
Well, actually, two things. When Rachel did this prior funeral day, she said she was God's birth, then her family.
Yep.
Then her church.
Right.
Then her church.
That's right. Yeah, your first ministry is at home. That's, you know, preachers remind me sometime, "Don't overlook your family, son." Brother Goetz says down there, "Don't overlook your family at home." That's your first ministry for sure. All right, thank you, Paul. Bless them. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you, Lord. Thank you for the opportunity to come, Lord, just to share your word, to grow, to lift up one another, Lord, that we may be the kingdom men men that you've called us to be, Lord. We may have failed tremendously prior to today, Lord, but you've given us yet another opportunity, Lord, to step our game up, Lord, and honor you in all that we do. Lord, that we may be an impact on our generation now and on the generations to come, Lord. May we focus, Lord, on faith, family, and favor, Lord, from you, and be a blessing to others for you, Lord, in your name. Lord, we just thank you, we love you, in Jesus' precious name. Amen.